I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back here.
Camper.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Miller. Singleton. Schmidt. Hens.
Good afternoon.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of November 7th, 2017.
Move for approval.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Next we have the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Next item number six, consideration of updating job description for Civic Center caretaker. Greg, did you want to take this?
Yeah, we were approached by the Civic Center Commission to reevaluate the in-house caretaker, as you may know, is paid in compensation for rent costs that are associated with the live-in caretaker position in the apartments in the lower level of the Civic Center. And so currently, based on the wage line that's outlined in your packet, they put aside eighteen hours per week for rent. That equates to, I believe, on a monthly basis, between $702 and $820 in rent. And so the Civic Center Commission has made the recommendation that we reduce that down to ten hours per week for a rental amount that would, based on the hourly wage, be in the range of $390 to $456 a month. I think there was, based on some of the information that Randy got when he was looking into this, he felt that the rental rate was high. We were having issues with our live-in caretaker. Told him he'd converted over to regular pay and moved out due to the rate that we're charging right now. It just wasn't economical for him. And so that's when the council, or the commission came to us and made this recommendation. And so that's where we're at in regards to it. The position is, I believe, paid for by the commission, so.
Does the council have any questions or comments on this item? Did you want to add anything? Okay.
Well, there's nobody living there now?
Currently, no. Is that correct? Yep.
He was there, but he's not. He works there.
He works there. But for all the events that we have going into the nighttime, getting tables prepped and moved for the next morning and everything else, it's far more ease of use and economical, also the security of the building and maintenance of the building to have that live-in caretaker. And the commission would prefer to have somebody in that sort of capacity if they could get it.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the updated job description.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Our next item, this is number seven, consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of property located in Plum Creek Park adjacent to the Seward Middle School and authorize the mayor to execute all documents associated with the sale. Greg, did you want to walk me through this?
Yeah, and I have a map here, and so I will. You want, I'll take you down a bit. You'll pass those around. We were approached by a developer. The Seward Middle School and Seward School District recently put out RFPs to sell property south of the current middle school adjacent to the neighborhood down there, off of Plainview, I believe it is. And so they're looking to develop that. The successful bidder on the development, I believe, was Par 72 LLC. They've come up with a development design for single-family residential. That concept is included in your packet. As you can see, there's a number of residential lots in there and a small cul-de-sac on the western end of it. Also a little walkway, similar to the walkways we currently have going up to the middle school. But as you can see on the schematic drawing there, the development drawing, there's a shaded area. That shaded area corresponds to the map that I provided you here, the little green area that I identified. Those two lots that are adjacent to that triangle are really odd-shaped. And the developer came to us in the initial plan review and said, would the city have any interest in selling those lots or that land to us? It's not even platted land. Selling that land to us so that we can make lots that are more cohesive with the rest of our design. And so at that point, myself and Ed Gonzalez, we went and talked to Bob Core, the rec department, as well as Ed checked in with all of our utilities to look at that property. Bob identified that that's basically just unused ground that somehow is kept in Plum Creek Park. He has no use for it. It's kind of angled downward toward the ball fields. And so he had no questions or concerns in regards to it. And then Ed confirmed that we had no utilities in there that we had any issues with. And so at that time, I said that we would be potentially interested in it. And the developer needed to throw a number out to us. And I believe the number that they offered it for, which for the .14 acres, is $3,450. And this equates to approximately exactly the per acre amount that they're paying for the rest of the property, approximately. And so I thought that was a reasonable sum. It came in under $5,000. And so when I passed it along to city attorney, our city attorney recommended this process because it's under $5,000 and we're dispersing the property. And so administration would recommend approval of this sale, unless you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council on this item? You good? Then I'd ask for someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2017-17. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Thank you. Thank you. You can try to sneak out, but it's going to ding on you, so.
We'll see you guys soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consideration for awarding bid for main water meter placement to TJ Osborne Construction, incorporating the amount of $156,750. Did you want to start this?
I can't, we can have Tim come up. Tim, you are going to come up since you're here.
Tim Rich, State City of Seward Water and Wastewater Director. We took, we had four bids come in on the project to repair that water main break over there. And we selected Osborne, and he was the lowest bidder. And he was recommended as a good contractor to complete the job. So we'd like to go ahead with him on that bid so we can go ahead and get this completed. We're looking at probably completion date at the end of December. And that was one of the things we looked at is who could get the job done as quick as possible. And there was two low bids, and he was the lowest. So that's who I would recommend for the project.
Thanks, Tim. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
How will we pay for this?
This one will just work into, because it's an emergency repair. If you didn't know, this is the repair for the break that occurred this summer. And so Tim has sufficient cash reserves within his wastewater and water budgets that we'll pay for it out of that. And ultimately, it will make it work or amend the budget towards the end after this approval.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
The only other one I would add is, this has to be completed because if we have a break on the other line that's servicing the south portion of the city, then they're completely cut off from water service. So this is part of our redundant system to feed south Seward.
Yeah, in the break area, we're replacing that with a 16-inch main and increasing the size for the future. If we replace more, then it will increase the size of all of it, so.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do the motion to approve and award the bid. We have a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Next is item number nine, consideration of service agreement with Nebraska Public Power District.
Previously, we entered into a service agreement with Nebraska Public Power District, NPPD, back in 2005. And essentially, it sets out the relationship between the city of Seward and NPPD for our request to them to perform services that we need. And so if we need additional work completed on one of their substations to feed something for us, if we need additional pulls out in their system that we're not in control of, feeder lines, transmission, anything else that we would request that they would have to perform for us because it's in their system, this is the agreement that regulates it. For the most part, the agreement that's proposed tonight, I did get a copy early this week from the original one, the 2005 one. Basically, they've just tightened up after 12 years some of the elements, the way that we would dispute a bill, things like that. I did send it on to Kelly. He did take a look at it and approved us moving forward with it. I looked over again this week and also had the electric department review it. And so we have no questions in regards to it. But if you do otherwise, administration would recommend approval.
Any questions or comments on item number nine?
I move to approve the agreement.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Next, item number 10, consideration of a resolution increasing the fees charged at the cattle athletic training facility.
Bob, you want to come up and address this one? Parks and Rec Board, as it just states in your note, in your item, recommend increasing fees on the cattle facility, practice facility out there. And so Bob can kind of speak to what those increases were and the reasoning behind it.
Over the summer with Parks and Rec, we met a couple times and we were going through the policy, trying to clear up what Seward base meant as far as teams using the facility. And in that process of clearing it up, we had a committee of three members that met with us to kind of go through. They wanted to change the fee, the team fee, again, to raise it to 300 per team. We got 24 teams that drafted the other night. Six of those were, six of those 24 were teams that were under the 75 percent, had Seward kids on it, or were under the age of 10 and under. So I think we had three of three.
Move for ten.
And also, if we did allow a team to come in, they were getting charged the same as a Seward base, or a Seward team. So they wanted to raise that rate. They had one of the six kids coming, if they're coming from Beatrice or Omaha or Lincoln, to be at that hundred dollars for that hour and 15 minutes to make it. But where we're at, 24 teams, we really don't see that we would, that we still want to allow time for other individual type hitting, pitching, whatnot, for our Seward kids to be a part of that. You know, two of our batting cage nets are, we're looking at having to maybe replace them. They're the ones of baseball being at 70 feet. It's about $1,800. The other one's around $1,600. We put an exhaust fan in. We're getting mold because there was no exhaust fan when that was built. So this summer, with the humidity, we're seeing mold on the walls. Working with Ed, we had a fan put in, exhaust fan, that can be, try to cut down on some of that. So they're starting to be, building being eight, nine years old, we're starting to see some wear, some wear and tear here and there. Talking with the coaches of these teams, they thought it was still way below what they're, that, what they were, some of them were paying before. Talking to some, they were paying $600 for eight practices for a two-month period. So they thought for $300, they're getting 22-plus practices, 22, 24 practices, that they were still getting a very good deal. If you broke it down to 12 kids on a team, it was roughly about $13 was what each kid would pay for 22 practices. So it's still being kept really, they're really cheap for those 24 teams that are using it, which are softball and baseball. And our, they still are, our high school team practices in there as well.
Yes, Dean.
Is this enough increase to take care of the expenses that you incur over there?
That we're, yes, that we're going to look for coming up in the next couple of years. Trying to, you know, we're hoping that we can fix some of those nets that we can, maybe if we have place one and not two, and get three through the next year.
Any other questions or comments on item number 10? Otherwise, the resolutions, I would ask if someone would like to introduce the resolution. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2017-18. Would someone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Okay, thank you. Next is item number 11. This is consideration of an ordinance establishing a city of Seward's volunteer emergency responders incentive program and appointing a certified administrator for said program. Greg, do you want to explain this one?
Yes. We were approached through a roundabout way last spring during tax season and notified that our volunteer fire department is eligible for a state tax incentive, income tax incentive individually, as long as the city adopts a program to kind of verify their activity level, their training level, and a number of other items. So they, the department itself pursuant to this body, they designate an administrator. That person keeps track of everybody's hours and everything else. And they ultimately submit in January a list to the council. The council approves that list pursuant to this program. And then we send that list off to the Department of Revenue. And then they're eligible to incur and get signed off for the tax credit. And so I put the program together. It's basically just mirroring the requirements of state statute. I did go and meet with the fire department and had them kind of discuss it, find out who they would like to appoint a certified administrator, check in on any questions. And then I went back and drafted it, submitted it back to them. Their leadership had no questions and did inform me of who they appointed. And so I brought here tonight. So that's kind of the gist of what the ordinance is.
Any questions or comments on item number 11?
That, so only $250. It's not a big amount, but it's a little bit of a incentive.
Any other questions or comments?
Thirty years ago.
They don't give it back. They don't do it. No, it's not going to try. If there's no other questions or comments, I would ask if someone would like to introduce the ordinance.
I'll go ahead and introduce.
In ordinance to establish a city of Seward volunteer emergency responder incentive program to provide for appointment of a certified administrator for said program, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to provide for an effective date in ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2017-21. And the title is hereby approved. I give a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
Again, this is ordinance number 2017-21. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, should ordinance number 2017-21 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
When you're better walking back, Camper Fritz, hands.
And then item N, consideration of appointing Connie Langwin as the certified administrator of the volunteer emergency responders incentive program.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next, item number 12, discussion and consideration of an ordinance approving the comprehensive pay plan and a cost of the increase effective December 1st, 2017. Greg?
All right. Pursuant to our employee handbook, as you all know, every three years, we undertake a formal comparability study of wages and benefits. And then in the corresponding years between that three-year period, it's left to the administration to go verify changes in any other things that are going on within those. And so that's what we've done this year. Pursuant to my review of kind of the pattern of what we did last year, the things that we compared and looked at, and pursuant to state statute, I put together a comparability Excel file for, for lack of a better word. It's not really a full-on study, but we did submit questionnaires to 10 comparable cities. That included Crete, York, Wahoo, Skyler, Gretna, Beatrice, Fairberry, Plattsden, Flair, and Nebraska City. We asked for wage information. We asked for the amount of employer contribution to their highest level of healthcare plan. So that usually is, usually a PPO family plan is the highest one that they contribute to. And then we also asked what their match was for the retirement programs. And then we took that data and we looked at the information that we got from Paul from last year. We looked at information that we got from Sheila in her annual review. And we put together a, basically our own comparability information using the standard that's set by the CIR, the state of Nebraska. And we looked through all that data and we came up with a few changes and adjustments that we saw where we were a little bit out of whack. In addition to that, we also have new physicians that don't have pay lines. And so this was the time that we decided to go in and set those pay lines using that same data and information. And so just quickly walk you through it so I don't have to answer questions about later. We can, you want to see the numbers? I have them here on each of these positions. Pass that down. The first one is the administrative assistant for the municipal building. This is the position that we just approved and created formally last meeting. That's Vicki's position, is a part-time position so we don't concern ourselves with benefits because they're not attributed to. And so we look just at wages. And as we can see with similar positions in the cities that have them, we are slightly low. And so we've recommended trying to get closer to that. What you're looking for is a 98 to 102 percentile from minimum to max that you see there on that very first page of the document I hand out to you. And so we think an adjustment listed there between $13 and $17 gets us pretty close to where we want to be. So that's our initial recommendation for that position. Additionally, if you flip to the next page, the aging services, there are two other comparable cities that did have senior services manager and a senior center director, which we thought were comparable positions. And our current aging services commission assistant salary range is significantly lower than those. And so we've made the adjustment there to get us closer and near the final benefit amount. Just so you can, this is a better example. So I'll look at this. What we do is we take the minimum and the maximum for each wage range. We also attribute the retirement matches for each city. And then we create what's called the HRB. That's the hourly rate value for healthcare. And we add those three together, and that's what gets you the far-right totals, the total mid and max. And that's the procedure that the CIR has outlined to calculate the value on an hourly basis of wage and benefits. And so while I'm looking at the comparison on the far-right end, the only thing that I'm recommending adjusting is wages. So I adjust the wages, looking at the far-right number to see that it meets in that 98 to 102 percentile. So the aging services commission, we recommended increasing. The next increase was a twofold increase, one due to low wages and also due to some administrative issues. And that's for our baseline police officer, police officer one and police officer two. We're the only city that offers in our comparison two positions for a patrol officer. And so we felt it was more appropriate to compare them almost as a combined element because they perform the same jobs. We differentiate slightly differently. But they do not do that in any of the other cities. And so we felt it was more appropriate to get them more in line with, closer to that mid-range, that 98th percentile. We also noted, the mayor and I, the chief, have been working to try and get positions filled. We have two open positions with them last year. And we really struggled to get enough quality candidates to apply. And so it's been a real struggle for us. And the people that are on the low end right now is Fairberry. They have the lowest wages. But they've already guaranteed a 7% increase for their police officers alone. And so we're going to get further and further behind being close to the second to last in that line of 10. Additionally, we're obviously competing with York and competing with Beatrice and Lincoln for police positions all the time. They constantly have openings. And so we think the wage recommendations that you see here put us more in line with being competitive so we can get quality candidates because we still have one position we're going to have to fill. So that's our recommendation, moving on. Next is the city engineer. Unfortunately, with our comparable cities, not terribly many of them have a city engineer. And again, we kind of morphed this out of what I always call is John Hughes' position, but that GIS project coordinator, capital improvements person. And so we, one, created a line here that you'll see at the bottom that I think is matching with other engineers in towns like Hastings, Beatrice, Garing, Norfolk. But also meets in with the guys of where we were in regards to the funds that we were paying out for John and his services when he was serving that full-time capacity. So we're not getting out of whack of what our budget was before and making big jumps. And so this is my recommendation in regards to city engineer. Parks and Rec Director. Parks and Rec Director, we found for the most part on the bottom end, we're doing all right in regards to our wage salaries. But on the top end, we were significantly lower. And also noted that our Parks and Rec Director also serves in the capacity of keeping track of the cemetery and our golf course now. And I didn't see that combination found anywhere else in any of the comparable cities. And so my recommendation was to try and bring that top-end one up more in line with what we saw in the comparability and get us closer to that 98th percentile on there. The accounting assistant budget administrator, we've had that position open for three years now and been unsuccessful in recruiting anybody at the original pay line. And so I went back and looked at finance directors and treasurer positions that handle funds and coordinate budgets and do some of the things that I think they're more on what that job description is. And I've gotten us closer on a range that I believe will make us a little bit more competitive in trying to recruit somebody into that position. And so that is the change there. And then the last one that's in here is the building inspector zoning administration. We call Building and Zoning Coenforcement Director. And similar to what we saw with the Parks Director, just low on the top end. And so I wanted to get that more up in line, closer to the 98th percentile. In addition, we're also going to be making an adjustment to that position. They're going to be taking on the responsibilities of GIS coordination throughout the city. They're going to be working as our floodway manager. And so those are the things that are going to be moved over that we didn't have John here to do anymore that was in that job position, that GIS position. We're going to move that over to this position so there'll also be additional responsibilities. And so I think getting us closer to that 98th percentile will also be appropriate. Some of the other changes that we made in there, just in your packet, if you look, they're all the ones that are highlighted are the ones that have changed. We had a few positions, specifically the custodian and the police sergeant, that we made changes within the pay line, but not the minimum or the max. And what happened was, is last year when we did this, due to the way the steps work and our step plan and the numbers we had adjusted, people were ending up either being up a level that they weren't or they were getting paid less at the level they were at. And so we had to do some manual handwork. And what we like to see is an even match between each step, a percentage rise. And that's the way the formulas work that we have in Excel files. And so right now, the people that are in those positions, police sergeant, custodian, are all at the max already so we can realign the numbers underneath because we're not affecting anybody's wages. And so to just make the moves between each step consistent, that's why we adjusted those on the internal side. And so those are all the recommendations. Those recommendations then are recommended in here and changed. We brought these two, initially, I discussed this with administration and the mayor, and then we have an employee committee or personnel committee that oversees this, that Chris serves on, Carl serves on, and Ellen, I believe. And I went to Chris and asked him what he would like to do, and he felt that just kind of do what we have performed here and then bring it to the council and get taken care of. And so we had that discussion, I also met with Ellen and went through it and discussed it as well and tried to get any questions or concerns to make sure I wasn't missing anything because I obviously was not here for the discussion last year when you guys worked with Paul. In my discussions though, the, sometimes we're concerned about some of these jumps being larger than others. On the budgetary side, what I would say is due to the fact that we won't fill a police officer position, the city engineer position, or the budget position most likely till January, so that we get enough time to list them, job descriptions, with the police one at civil service potentially. And so it's just a prolonged period. The savings alone for those three months of having nobody in those positions will well overcompensate for any of the cost underneath the budget. So we'll still remain under budget even with these improvements. But the recommendation, even in talking to Councilman Schmidt, was, let's just take care of these now so we don't have to remember that we're inching them forward. Let's just eat them while we have the budget room now, under our budget line items and get them taken care of and get them in line so we're comparable moving forward. So that's where these numbers start. So all those changes are made in here, and then what's in the ordinance after those changes, with leaving everybody else the way they were last year, is a recommendation of a two-point-two-five percent COLA, cost of living increase. And that recommenda- recommendation comes three-fold, one, that is the average COLA that was given by all the comparable cities. So we went through and got the COLA that was approved for all those cities on October first, we approved for December first. And the average came out to approximately two-point-two-five. Secondarily, the consumer price index is at two-point-two right now, and the inflation rate is two-point-two right now. And so we thought that was a very appropriate recommendation. And so the ordinance, after the adjustments I just talked to you about, increases all wages across the board two-point-two-five percent to make up for that cost of living. And so that's what's proposed here before you, and I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from the council on item number twelve? Yes, Alan?
What's our bottom line then, total package cost?
I do not have the bottom line total package cost, I don't know if we've figured that out.
Or any increase from last year, I mean, is it roughly?
We budgeted approximately in your budget from what you expended last year, two percent. But again, with the three positions that are pretty hefty positions, especially the city engineer, we'll be well under what you guys budgeted from last year. So the amount last year, two percent more was in your current budget, so we should be able to handle this very easily.
Thank you for doing all that work.
Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, I would ask if someone would introduce the, I'm sorry, introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
In order to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the City of Seward, Nebraska, to provide for a two-point-two-five percent cost of living adjustment, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is here and is designated as Ordinance Number twenty seventeen dash twenty-two, and the title is hereby approved, I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. This, again, this is ordinance Number twenty seventeen dash twenty-two. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
Remove.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall ordinance Number twenty seventeen dash twenty-two be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes. Now, this is the last ordinance for the evening, so only one final motion to make the ordinance as a part of the permanent record. We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next, item number thirteen, the city administrators' report.
Yes. Just a few highlights. Would note that we were awarded the downtown revitalization grant, I emailed you guys out on Friday, but just a reminder. It's a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant, C W G. And so, what we'll be looking for in the future here as we continue on is we'll be designing that program and also approving all the special conditions and doing all the front stuff on that. We'll also need to decide if we're going to use Send or any other administrator as our administrator of that grant. And so that contract will be rolling through here in December if that's what we want to decide to go with. But it was a successful grant application, we're excited about it. And so, I would look forward to getting together with you guys and trying to put that program together, how you guys want it to look and how you guys want it to be implemented. Additionally, the plan, the comp plan update steering committee will have their first meeting on November twenty-seventh here, coming Monday at the library. Some people can't make it, but we'll be having meetings every month through June or July at this point. And so, we'll be getting together one o'clock at the library in the conference room on the main floor. Also want to thank, and I know three of them are here, no, no, actually, all three of them are here. We got the opportunity to be invited out to the Nebraska Flood Plan and Stormwater Managers Conference, the SAC Museum, to speak on our flood event that turned into a water event. And we did a presentation for them to talk about our experiences, and the crux of it was, is due to good flood plane management by the city, buying up all the flood properties and doing all the other things that we've done over a number of years, we were able to focus on a different problem we weren't expecting in the middle of the flood. So we weren't trying to help people get out of their trailer park, or trying to get people out of their homes, or dealing with any of the other associated issues directly that you find with the flood. We were able to focus on something else and use all, you know, the manpower that we had to take care of that. And so it was a kind of a Murphy's Law lesson that we provided to them, and I got a number of responses back since we've made it back home. But Ed, Tim, and Mel came out with me and we presented on what we did and kind of the timeline. And the fun part was, for our presentation, we used our Facebook page of the city and kind of walked them through the timeline, how it happened as it happened. So it was interesting to see, you know, some of our famous last words, where we were like, oh, be careful, one of these streets might have water over the top of it, to what you ultimately saw it end up being. And so, we were fortunate to do that and we thought it was a good learning lesson. Other than that, I can answer any other questions you may have about the administrators' report.
Any questions or comments regarding the report? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the report.
Remove to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Are there any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Seeing none, we have the announcements for upcoming events. Jonathan?
Yes, of course, we have our seventh annual Christmas festival, it's upcoming Saturday, we'd encourage everyone to participate. And that's culminated at five-thirty with the lighted Christmas parade. And then we have also our annual meeting extravaganza on January twenty-second, that's Monday, January twenty-second. So we'd encourage you all to consider joining us for that event, and that'll be out at harvest hall.
Thanks, Jonathan. That's all we have, yes?
On Saturday, also, we have Christmas at the museum.
Okay.
Eight till two.
Okay.
And they'll be, I think, from eleven till two, there's somebody each hour playing the music, or key tones, I think, are first.
Are you, are you playing music?
I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
And then they're showing a new movie.
Oh, okay.
In the theaters.
Sure. Wonderful, thank you for that update. So we have for updates on events, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you and have a good Thanksgiving.